Good evening and welcome to the June 10, 2024 regularly scheduled meeting of the Rockingham County Planning Board. Let the record show that a quorum is present. At this time, the Chair calls upon Mr. Cory Scott for our invocation.
For God in heaven, we're grateful to gather here today to, in this planning board meeting, and we're grateful for the opportunity to serve the community, serve the citizens he has placed in us. We pray that as we go through these proceedings, that we might be guided, that our hearts will be open to understanding the needs of the people who are presenting, and that we might follow the rules with compassion, and help us to always have thy Spirit to guide us in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes.
You want to adopt the agenda first?
I'm sorry, adoption of the agenda is first.
I move that we adopt the agenda as presented.
Motion has been made and seconded to adopt the agenda as written. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, like signers, no opposition, so the agenda is adopted. Now is the approval of the minutes for the May 13 meeting.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve the minutes as written.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the minutes as written for the May 13, 2024 meeting of the Rockingham County Planning Board. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, like signers, no opposition, so the minutes are approved. This hearing is a quasi judicial evidentiary hearing. That means it is like a court hearing. State law sets specific procedures and rules concerning how this board must make its decision. These rules are different from other types of land use decisions like rezoning cases. The board's discretion is limited. The board must base its decision upon competent, relevant, and substantial evidence in the record. A quasi judicial decision is not a popularity contest. It is a decision constrained by the standards in the ordinance and based on the facts presented. If you will be speaking as a witness, please focus on the facts and standards, not personal preference or opinion. Participation is limited. This meeting is open to the public. Everyone is welcome to watch. Parties withstanding have rights to participate fully. Parties may present evidence, call witnesses, and make legal arguments. Parties are limited to the applicant, the local government, and individuals who can show they will suffer special damages. Other individuals may serve as witnesses when called by the board. General witness testimony is limited to facts, not opinions. For certain topics, this board needs to hear opinion testimony from expert witnesses. These topics include projections about impacts on property values and projections about impacts of increased traffic. Individuals providing expert opinion must be qualified as experts and provide the factual evidence upon which they base their expert opinion. Witnesses must swear or affirm their testimony. At this time, we'll administer the oath to all individuals who intend to provide testimony Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you are going to give in this case is truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God? Thank you, you may be seated. The parties in this case are entitled to an impartial board. A board member may not participate in this hearing if he or she has a fixed opinion about the matter, a financial interest in the outcome of the matter, or a close relationship with an affected person. Does any board member have a personal bias or opinion for which they wish to be recused? The parties in this case also have rights for any ex parte communications to be disclosed. Has anyone had any ex parte communications about this case? We are now ready to have staff present us the particulars of case 2024-15.
Everyone, I hope you're all well. Can everyone hear me okay? Roy, did I do something wrong? I can't see my display. There we go. Thank you, Roy. As far mentioned tonight is case 2024-15, it's a special use permit request from 1A Towers. Mr. Jonathan Yates is here to represent 1A Towers in coordination with Verizon Wireless. Legal counsel, local legal counsel is also here. This property is located on Lula Road, just north of Eden Church Road and Ellisboro Road, just about two miles south of the Madison ETJ line, northern Huntsville Township. Subject parcel is owned residential agricultural and is currently occupied by a manufactured home in use as a bona fide farm. It's a very rural parcel, very clear. In the larger area, there's a little bit of a mix of zoning, including residential agricultural, highway commercial, light industrial, residential mixed, some neighborhood commercial. All of this is along Ellisboro and Eden Church Roads, just to the south of the parcel location. This is located in the G1 land class, identified as the rural crossroads land class. There is a rural crossroads node at Sardis Church in Ellisboro, according to the comprehensive land use plan. It sits adjacent to a small area of land located in the O2 land class, so it's fairly rural overall. I won't go into the details of the staff findings and recommendations, these are standard. We have received a complete and thorough application from Mr. Yates, very attentive to detail and the needs of information that we have in our special use permit requirements, which are extensive. All of the important things have been covered. Site plan, needs justification, performance guarantee, insurance certification, approval of the tower by our third party engineering firm, Atlantic Technologies. Of note, this tower is an engineered tower with an engineered 50% fall zone, like we've considered recently. I'll point it out on the site plan. It includes just the application page. Here's the vicinity map, as you can see, northern Huntsville Township, just south of Madison. There is a lack of some service in this area. It's a map of the zoning matrix in the area, almost exclusively residential agricultural, adjacent to the parcel with some mix of some other uses just south of there, on Eden Church, Ellisboro, and Sardis Church. This is an environmental map. It's not in a protected watershed. There's a pond on the property. It's indicated it's a wetland on our map, our GIS map, but whether or not it's a federally recognized wetland is not clear. The tower, however, will be set back far enough from it so there'll be no impact to the tower, to the pond. This is the general location of where the tower will be sited. It's a 250-foot tall tower, so the engineer breakpoint will be 125 plus 10%, so the engineer fall zone is about 137 feet, give or take. And if you look at the site plan in your packet, you'll see the southern boundary line drawn with a perimeter circle around it is right shy of 138 feet. We can go back to that. Of course, a new Alice Tower can be permitted in the RA zoning district when approved by the planning board. This has been approved by the consulting engineer. It appears to meet all the requirements of the UDO. Staff finds this application to be complete and ready for review by the planning board, recommends approval. Development shall proceed with all the standards in 62.8802 of the UDO. Any additional permits or approvals necessary must be obtained before operation of the tower. And here are just our final statements on special use permits. All four of these items must be considered and approved in order for the special use permit to move forward. The site plan is buried in your packet, just beyond Mr. Yates' very thorough narrative and justification of the need for the tower. As you can see, it's accompanied by the tower profile, which shows just a snapshot of what the tower will look like. The tower setback is further from, my plate plan's too tiny, I can't see the numbers. Tower setback is further than the actual fall zone perimeter. The fall zone perimeter is indicated, and meets all the requirements for an engineered tower in the newly updated special use requirements in the ordinance. There's also a map of post coverage, a boost in coverage in what's kind of a cell tower desert right now. Additional information about the general search ring, the towers that were closer to it within a four-mile radius as required by the ordinance, and then just the summary from Atlantic Technologies confirming approval that this tower is of sound design and recommended for approval. I would like to answer any questions.
Did you receive any phone calls or emails or other communications for or against this request?
We didn't receive any phone calls, we didn't receive any emails. It was very quiet. With the three most recent towers that we've had, we may have received in total a couple of inquiry phone calls, and that's it.
Was a balloon test performed?
It was. It was, and I have the documentation of that in the case files. The complete packet, should I have put all that together for you, would have been about a 250-page notebook. I can do that for you if you want. But yes, the balloon test was performed successfully advertised. I have the advertising affidavit from the balloon test. All the little checkboxes in that long list of requirements, I've gone through one by one to make sure that they've been satisfied, and they have. We have certificate of insurance. We have the decommissioning bond in place, approved by the county attorney. Every little aspect, yeah, we've got Ts crossed and Is dotted for.
Okay. And my last question is, will co-location be?
That will be allowed on the tower. I'll let the applicant explain a little more, but the special use permit requirements do state that some sort of space must be made available for other carriers to co-locate.
Board members, any other questions for Mr. Cochran?
Is there a residence, it looks like, on the property? It's had a mobile home?
It is. It's a single I manufactured home, and it's located completely outside of the fall zone. There's nothing in the ordinance that states that the two can't exist on the same property. Actually, we see it quite often, especially for rural farm properties, that might have a nice little spot for an elevated tower way back off the road on a farm parcel where somebody lives and works up front, and they just lease out the area for the tower.
Okay. Is that what's taking place here? Someone is living there?
Exactly. Well, I don't know if someone's actually living there, but there is a manufactured home in place on the property, a significant distance from the location.
Since it's what, 368 feet maybe?
I believe that's correct. Yeah, I can go back to the site plan, just to confirm.
Any other questions for Mr. Cochran?
Yeah, there's also, I'm seeing on the map, there's also several farm buildings that it looked like they're approximately in the same spot.
Yeah, I can go back to the parcel map, and we can look at that. Yeah, here you can see the manufactured home.
You can see the manufactured home, but on the Google map I'm looking at shows that there's farm buildings that are pretty much in that clearing where that dot is. Are they no longer there?
I do not know specifically if those farm buildings have been cleared. You mean within the perimeter, the approximate perimeter that I marked off, or?
Actually, in that red, you know, in that pink circle where that dot is, there's actually farm buildings right there. But I don't know, so I'm just curious, from what I'm looking at, and I'm just curious if they're.
If you're checking Google Maps, it could be a discrepancy in the year of the photography. Sometimes Google Maps has older photography than our aerial imagery. This is taken.
It could have been removed or something to that effect.
This was taken from early '22. Sometimes Google Maps has newer photography than what we have, and sometimes our pictometry is newer. But since the tax map is what we rely on, that's what we go with.
Yet you didn't drone this thing, right, to say?
Yeah, I did. I have my little planning zone rover out there.
Okay. I got another question. If you look on the parcel, what is all the lines in the road? Is that farming, or is it, it looks like a place you may park cars, or what?
All indications, those are farming roads and farm trails to get in and out, tractor paths, is best I can tell. Yeah.
Looks like they were cutting hay on the property.
The property is enrolled currently in the present use value program for farm deferment, so it's being used as a true working farm.
Okay, okay.
A little bit, but it's just very well manicured.
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. We have two speakers that have signed up to speak, Mr. Longest and Mr. Yates. I'll leave it up to you two, which one of you wants to go first. For the record, please state your name and address.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Frank Longest. I'm an attorney in Burlington, North Carolina. We serve as local counsel for Verizon. We're aiding the applicant in this matter since it's a quasi judicial hearing, and the need of a North Carolina licensed attorney may be required, so I'm here in that role. I want to introduce Jonathan Yates, attorney in Charleston, South Carolina. I've known Jonathan for a number of years. Jonathan's kind of known in the industry as a guru who does applications in Virginia, North Carolina, South Carolina, and Georgia, literally in the hundreds, probably one of the most knowledgeable people about cellphone towers and land use application in the Southeast. So at this time, I'll be briefing, turning it over to Jonathan, the person who knows all about this.
Thank you so much, Frank. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Jonathan Yates, good to be with you tonight. First and foremost, before I get started, and I promise, people joke that it takes me six minutes to say my name. I won't do that tonight. But what I want to do tonight, before I get started, is to thank this gentleman. As Frank told you, I work on towers around the Southeast, and you encounter a lot of things, but what you don't often encounter is what I encountered in Rockingham County with Mr. Lynn Cochran. It was a long ordinance, he got me through it. I asked him 101 stupid questions. He never laughed at me, or at least till he hung up the phone. I didn't hear him laugh at me, but it was just, I don't always encounter this kind of professionalism and courtesy that I encountered here, and I thank y'all. I thank, I thank Lynn. What we're doing tonight is Lynn sort of outlined for you. It's a tower for Verizon, but to answer some of the questions as we go. It's designed for Verizon Wireless, but it's also designed if and when the other broadband carriers in the area want to go on. There's space on the tower for four additional, and there's space on the ground. The property in question, it's approximately 27 acres. It's owned by an outfit called Friends Farm LLC. They bought it in 2021 from James and Miranda Knox. And out of the 27 acres, and we talked about what's going on there, they are right next to, right across from where the tower is going. He has some hoop houses where he's doing some vegetables. That's about a two-acre piece of it. You've got about 18 acres that he's cultivating. He's alternating corn, soybeans, occasionally puts in some winter wheat, and the balance of seven acres is trees. There is a manufactured, there's a mobile home on the property. It is not occupied. AJ, the owner, is in the process of fixing it up, but it needs a bit of work, and no one is living there now. So, and AJ is out there, he could not be with us tonight. He had a previous family situation, not out of state, but he's out there most every day working, working his fields, but no one's living there. What it allowed Verizon to do is exactly where they needed to be. And if you've been out that way, they got a deficit. They do have a deficit in coverage, and this facility at this height will allow them to cover the deficit. I think their closest tower is about 3.27 miles to the west, so these folks are not getting what they should. When we talk about coverage, what's it mean? It's people doing voice, doing broadband, very importantly, and I do not have the statistics for Rockingham County, and I apologize. In my home county of Charleston County, South Carolina, 84% of all the 911 calls that go into our consolidated dispatch come from a wireless device. It makes sense. You're in trouble, you can pull the thing off your hip versus having to have a door to knock on. So that's important. We also found throughout the country, a couple years back during the pandemic, when everything was closed down, a lot of folks in rural areas, they were trying to work from home, trying to educate their children from home, and it wasn't always possible without some mobile broadband. So that's what we're offering. The ordinance, I could stay with you all night and go through it piece by piece, but just to hit the highlights, and that's my only, only thing I scuffled with Lynn, I said, "You asked for a lot of stuff here." But it's all good. 27-acre piece of property, we will be able to situate it carefully to meet all the setbacks. And just to show you a couple things. I promise y'all, I'll not go through everything we had to do to get here tonight. Before we came, obviously, we had the facility reviewed by the FAA, and they made the very important determination of no hazard to air navigation, no airport proximity. Lynn talked a little bit about engineered, the tower is engineered by a North Carolina professional engineer, Mr. Allen Burton Snyder, and he did two things here. One, he designed it to the NCTIA 222H standard for this part of Rockingham County, that's 110 mile per hour wind, and then he designed in the fall radius to be no greater than 125 feet, which is half the height of the tower. If we're allowed to, and so the tower, you have the tower itself, then you have the compound below, which we'll fence in. We put in an eight-foot chain link fence, we top it with three strands of barbed wires and anti-climbing device, got some pretty sensitive equipment in there. If we're allowed to do this, it takes about 60 to 90 days to build the tower. Most of that time is in letting the foundation set, and then the tower itself goes up in about a day. Then Verizon comes in and puts their equipment in. After that time, Verizon on average will only visit about eight to 10 times a year. The tower is, for the most part, is all operated remotely, is monitored remotely, but sometimes the tech will come, so we're not going to be, excuse me, not going to be creating any extra traffic either on Ellisboro, Alula Road, eight to 10 times a year. The tower will not put out any noise, odor, vibration, fumes, or glare. What are we trying to do? We're just trying to bring infrastructure. We refer to it as, some people call it the fourth utility or 21st century infrastructure. It is wireless infrastructure to serve the folks that live around there or travel down those roads. Well, again, I didn't take six minutes to say my name. I hope I covered what y'all want, but I'm here for any and all questions. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Yates?
I have a question for Mr. Yates.
Yes, ma'am.
One of the things that we're trying to do in Rockingham County now is increase the broadband capability, and there's been a lot of efforts towards that. In reference to your coverage area, can you give us some sense of, and this being a very rural area, can you give us some sense of how many families, or do you have that data available? How many families will be impacted so that they're?
I really don't, well, this is a sort of pre and post coverage, and the important thing about the green, the importance, we have a couple levels of coverage. You've got green, you've got yellow, and orange. Orange is on street. That means it could work if you're outside, or maybe in your, just outside and you can have that connection. The yellow is in vehicle. It'll work when you're in a car. The green is sort of the final frontier. That's in residential building, for the most part, our commercial building. So you see what we've been able to do. This is, as Lynn described, you've got a bit of a desert there. You've got towers below, you've got towers here, all around, and you've got nothing right here. So what we're trying to do, as much as we can, is fill in that green. The actual number of homes they'll touch, that I don't know. And again, that's Verizon's coverage.
Right.
The facility is designed so not only Verizon, but four others can go on there when they want to cover that area, too. So every little bit, and what we found to be the case is, when one carrier goes to an area that's a little bit of a desert, the others will follow. That's why we designed this platform for all the licensed carriers to go on. So it'll help that area a bit. The exact number of homes, I do not know.
But it looks like you went from no green to?
Yeah.
A pot of green.
And again, green, if you're in your home, it works.
Green is good.
Green is good.
Green is good. You know, that's what we found, I've been doing, as Frank said, been doing towers since 95, and people would always talk, well, you know, property values, that kind of thing. What we're, we're hearing a lot, I was up in a county in Virginia the other day, and one of the commissioners had actually decided to do his own research by calling four different real estate agents and says, "What does a tower do?" And they all came back, when these folks, a lot younger than me, go through looking to buy a house, they pull the phone out, they walk into every room, every closet, every bathroom, and if it doesn't work, they sometimes look at a house in another neighborhood. So again, and again, what we found, particularly with younger folks, they might never have a landline phone. I mean, the old landline phone, they sort of laugh at you because they, they got a wireless phone when they're 15 or 16, and that's their number for life wherever they go throughout the state or the country it is. So that was the goal here by Verizon, to get more folks in the green. Green is good, and they think they can achieve it from that location at that height.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any other questions for Mr. Yates?
I appreciate Verizon putting this tolerance because this whole area is where the future growth is of Rockingham County, and our commissioners have invested about $60 million in this area of the county through water and sewer and for residential construction, so is very much needed, and we thank you.
No, we're glad to do it, and glad that we're ahead of the game versus playing catch-up. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion? Sounds like this is a part of infrastructure, based on Keith Duncan's comments, that's sorely needed, and I see no reason for us not to approve it.
I do have one question. The write-up from the county, from staff indicated that the, I'm sorry, I got to go through 20 pages specs, it said something about, do we need to do a, can we need to add something about the fall, collapse diameter?
Oh, I apologize. We do not need to include a special motion to approve that any longer because we did that for the first tower we recently had because we hadn't yet updated the special use permit ordinance, and there was no specific contingency for an engineered tower, so it was made an extra condition of the approval. But now that this is part of the ordinance, there's no need to make that, so I need to revise that a little bit.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, as part of the procedures of a public hearing, I request that the applicant's record that's been submitted to the board for its consideration be made a part of the record of this proceeding and be incorporated as the applicant's compliance with your ordinance. In candor, you have one of the most complicated ordinances I've run into over the years, plus having an outside source to give you backup as to the engineering aspects of it. And so we want to incorporate all of that information as part of the record.
Now.
Do we need to handle that in a motion?
We need to have a motion to have all of Mr. Yates' testimony in the record.
So moved.
All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. So ordered.
I heard, I heard Keith first.
Keith second.
Any other discussion on this applicant's request for the cell tower?
I make a motion for approval.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the cell tower as described in special use permit 2024-15. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, like sign, there's no opposition, so the application is approved.
And Mr. Chair, if I can, if I can have a point of privilege, these two gentlemen made this very easy for us, thank you very much. That was, that was pretty good.
The next item on our agenda is new business, which we have none, and our final item is old business, which we're asking you to approve the board order for special use permit 2024-13, which coincidentally is another cell tower.
I make a motion to approve special use permit 2024-13, the Southern Towers.
Second. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, like sign, there's none, so the board order is approved and will be sent. I've already signed it, Lynn.
Can I make one comment?
Yes, you may.
Thank you, Lynn, for representing the county so well.
No, my goodness, thank you, you guys.
Yeah, but, but I think from what I'm hearing is that you went, you know, above that, what you would consider, you know, good standard work ethic, work performance, and did something, you know, it's special, so thank you.
I really appreciate that, thank you very much.
I share in Corey Scott's opinion. Thank you very much, Lynn.
I do as well, and I'd like to thank the two to my left as well. Don't leave them out as well.
This is a great team.
Yes, agreed.
Now we're ready for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to adjourn this meeting. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Thank you very much for your attendance tonight, this meeting is adjourned.